It's an only mode.
Alzheimer's Association.
Is it recording me, Paul?
Yes, you're on.
Everybody can hear. Okay. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. It is September 8th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We will, I'll call our meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Otega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Have seven present.
Okay, so as we're calling tonight, it's gonna be a little weird. Last couple of meetings, I didn't have to wear my masks because there was nobody in the meeting. But tonight, we're trying to start our virtual and in-person meetings for the first time. So you'll see us up here fumbling with our masks and things and trying to make sure that we can run the meeting as well. And if we need to change some things up for our next meeting, we will definitely. We have some neat plastic partitions in between each of the council members, and we have our masks on. But we'll see how this works for tonight. We have one public in tonight, and I know there's some that are online as well. And Mr. Lauer is on with us, but he is on virtually. So as I've kind of talked about before, as we move forward with this, virtual meetings may just be something that will be a part of our everyday business as we move forward. It just seems to be something that we could handle. So we'll see how it goes and keep moving forward on this. So please bear with us. If I miss you online, I will try to, I've got Paul once again helping to make sure we're all, you know, I'm getting everybody. And then we will keep moving forward. So Paul, I think we're gonna go ahead and skip it. Everyone who's on has been on already as far as council or attendees. So if that's okay, we'll go ahead and skip the presentation on how to work the system. So we are gonna go ahead and keep moving forward. Item 4A and 4B are our presentations. Board commission committee appointments, we have none tonight. I'll move right into item number five, city council agenda requests and announcements. And I'll start with Ms. Duncan. Do you have anything tonight?
I do not, sir.
Nothing. Okay. Mr. Geek.
Nothing. I'll wait. I'll talk a little bit later.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Applegate.
Nothing.
Ms. Estes.
I have a couple of things. There's a COVID response team for anybody that's dealing with financial struggles, loss, and I'm feeling isolated or anxious, they can contact, this is through FEMA, and it's the crisis counseling program in Colorado Springs. And if they're interested, they can reach out to covidresponse@aspenpoint.org and get some help with that. And so that's an ongoing program in response to COVID. And I want to remind everybody that September 17th next week is our Constitution Day, and that is when the United States Constitution was signed in 1787. And so just remember to take that day and remember our Constitution and the glorious republic that we have. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
I've got nothing tonight.
Okay, and Ms. Thompson.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I got a hair in my mouth from that darn mask. I wanted to thank Tamara Estes for arranging the lights for the purple and gold in honor of women's suffrage and getting the vote. So thank you. That was really beautiful out in front of City Hall, and thank you for staff for getting that put up. And this week, I'm not sure the exact day, but you're not going to be able to register to vote by paper by paper anymore. So if you want to register to vote, you have to go to govotecolorado.gov and get it done online. And so you can vote in the comfort of your own home rather than having to come out, whatever the weather is that day, or whatever the mask is you have to wear, you could do it at home, and you don't have to wear a mask, right? All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr. Applegate.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that it's the time for the Alzheimer's collection period, and it's really been tough to collect with all that's going on. But my wife is collecting, and so anybody that would want to get a little money to her, just let me know, and I'll get it to her.
Okay, that's good. And then I don't have anything tonight. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. If I miss anything, I'll come back later and we'll talk about it. So we'll keep moving forward. Item number six, public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you sign up with the clerk prior to the meeting. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer. We will direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And so I'm gonna look to Mr. Rick if he has anything tonight. Nothing. And if there are any hands raised online, I'm not seeing any. And thank you to those who are online with us tonight. Okay, we will go ahead and plug forward. We have consent agenda tonight. I'm not gonna read through the whole thing. We have item A, which is approval of our August 25th, 2020 city council meeting minutes. What would council like to do? Mr. Applegate.
Would you approve the consent agendas?
Okay. And Ms. Estes. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of our consent agenda. Please vote. And can I call Mr. Lauer's answer as well?
Yes. Buttons aren't working.
Was that a yes vote? Okay. A yes from Mayor Pro Tem, and then?
I don't believe that the lights are connected.
Oh, they're not? So you're gonna have to call it anyway?
I'll call the vote. Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Otega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote? Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yeah.
I have seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, so I guess we'll keep doing that. Thanks. We will move on to item eight, old business. We have none tonight. Item nine, new business. We'll move right on to 9B, Resolution 20-073. Contingent resolution approving an agreement with the El Paso County Public Health for ADA and parking lot improvements. Deputy City Manager Todd Evans.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight. And before I begin, I'd just like to thank Susan Willen. She's online with us. I don't see her now, but I saw her earlier up on our screen. And for those of you that may not know, Susan is our El Paso County Health, Public Health Director. And I appreciate her taking the time tonight to be virtual with us. As we all know, she's dealing with quite a bit on her hands and has been for seven months. So she's been doing yeoman's work, and she's here to answer some questions for you, and then she'll have a statement.
And she is on. He pulled it up finally. It's there, so.
There she is. Thank you for joining us, Susan.
You are here and in person, so thank you.
Appreciate you. What I'm going to discuss and give you a quick summary of, this is also something that Councilman Geek has been working on diligently for the last few weeks, several weeks, if not months, in his position as the liaison for our council on the El Paso County Public Health Board. So we appreciate his help as well. And the overall what this is, is El Paso County Health was looking for a location here in the southeastern portion of the county, something that could serve all the way from southeast Colorado Springs to the Fountain Valley and to everything else in this quadrant. And it'll quite possibly serve folks from all over the county. So we were grateful and very glad that they came to us and said, were we aware of anything, were we aware of any locations? So we took some of their staff out and looked at multiple locations in the entire Fountain Valley. They also had a real estate company that was representing them, who was doing a search for them in Colorado Springs, the Fountain Valley, City of Fountain. And what they found was down here, you get more bang for your buck, for lack of a better term, than right now in the Colorado Springs area. So I think we were all excited to find a location that fits their needs down in the Fountain Valley area. And that location is in the Beckett Center. I don't want to say former, because this deal hasn't closed yet. But we all know the location is the Beckett Center. And for those of you online that may not know where that is, that's pretty much basically at the corner of Fontaine and 8587 in the shopping center, right behind the old King Chef, which is now opened up. It is a different restaurant. So what has occurred is the Public Health Board, Susan, her staff, the realtor, the county, ourselves. So this is a partnership trying to bring this deal together. And part of that was a 30,000 square foot condo, which will occur within that shopping center. So for those of us that have been in the Fountain Valley for some time, it's the old Kmart, which has been rehabbed. Within the last two years, they've done about $1.6 million of rehab inside that building to include a new roof. So they've done quite a bit of work through there after the hailstorms and different things. So it's in very good shape. And something that the Health Department needed was as close to possible as a turnkey location that they could move into and be up and running. Because the funding that they're gonna be using is basically specific for COVID reaction and COVID recovery. So that's something we wanted to make sure we helped facilitate. And in that, we were excited to offer, and that will be up to you tonight, but offer, how could we partner with them? And having worked with Susan for many years and the other individuals, and they've got quite a good board. I was lucky enough to attend some of their board meetings, and their board was very supportive. And they've got a unique board made up of many health professionals that have been doing it for many years. So we toured the building together. We did multiple other things. So for us as a city, we looked at where could we help this partnership? And where could we be utilized to help bring those services down to Fountain? And I'm gonna let Susan here in a few moments describe exactly what they will be offering and bringing down into this facility. But what we looked at is we could assist them through our public works departments, one being our ADA through ROSA. And we could get involved with ensuring that all of the ADA requirements were met inside of that building. As of course, some of these will be federal dollars they're utilizing, so we have to make sure that all the ADA requirements are taken care of. And the second is the parking lot that folks are gonna use does need some revitalization. So initially, the county went out and the county did a complete ADA audit on the building. They sent that down to us. And we're very comfortable in getting involved in using our resources and the funding, if it is approved tonight, to be able to make sure that this location meets all the ADA requirements. And the second is, we're going to be using in-kind services with our streets department to go down and revitalize that parking lot to include crack filling, masticking in that parking lot, working with an outside contractor to getting chip seals done, and then coming in and restriping and repainting all of the ADA in that parking lot as well. So the request from staff would be that we support this location. And where we're at in the timing of this location, the Public Health Board last Tuesday agreed to the purchase price that they have been working on with the owner to get that done. This was one of the contingencies that's on that contract, that the City of Fountain partnered with them in doing the ADA improvements and the parking lot improvements up to an amount of $150,000. So part of the sale of this building is contingent on your decision this evening. So our request would be that we, as a city, partner with them and up to that amount, $150,000. We will go in, and part of this is we will use ROSA, we will do the contracting on the ADA improvements, and we will handle that for Susan and her team. Bob McDonald will handle the parking lot side of things to include any contract and the payments of. And part of that is to ensure that Susan and her team can continue to focus on what they need to be focused on, and that's the pandemic we're in the middle of, and not worrying about these type of details. So for those of you that haven't been on council for multiple years, this is something that has been brought up in council and has been an effort to try to get more county services down in this area of Colorado Springs and the Fountain Valley as a whole. Because we've never had that down in the Fountain Valley. So this is something that's been talked about on our council, and several of you have had different meetings and have gone to different things. So we're very excited to support this and make sure that we can bring these type of services down here. So with that being said, if there's no questions for me, I'm gonna turn it over to Susan and let her give a little description of what programs she plans on bringing down here.
Okay, any questions for Todd at this point? Nope, we're good.
Okay. Susan, if you would help me on what your plans are for your new location.
Go ahead. Oh, maybe one of us have to unmute or hold on. Okay, now try it. Okay. Try it again. Try unmuting yourself if you can. We can't. It's just a self-muted at this point. Oh, there it is.
There we go. There we go.
There you go.
Well, thank you for letting me join your meeting. So Mr. Evans, you are correct, and let me just give a little bit more background. That we, Public Health was made a priority by the El Paso County Commissioners with the Corona, the Corona Act dollars. And that stands for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. And we have a limited time to use that funding. And I had asked if it was allowable to purchase a building with using that funding, and it is allowable. We currently have a women, infant, and children program in Fountain. However, it is a kind of a small house with little room for any expansion. We're not able to do any nutritional types of cooking classes or breastfeeding classes with the limited space, and we're not able to expand in that location. So their lease is up at the end of this year, and that will be an anchor program at this facility if we're able to move forward with the purchase and all goes well. So we'll have a supplemental program which helps moms and babies and infants with nutrition. Many of our programs are geared towards community health, whereas the healthcare, it's a little bit of a different mission. But we do have a strong partnership with healthcare entities and Peak Vista in the Fountain area. We will offer immunizations. We will gear up for points of dispensing for COVID when we do have a COVID vaccine. We will have a presence with emergency preparedness and response, not only with COVID, but you know, whatever emergency there might be, because we'll have a longstanding presence with the purchase of this building. Flu season is coming up. We will hope to do some flu vaccinations in the parking lot as well as inside. It's a really great space to have quality physical distancing if it's snowing outside to where we can bring some of those services inside. We will have some hubs of services such as Nurse Family Partnership. We have a care coordination program that serves kids from zero to 21 years of age to get them connected to care coordination and the services that they need. We've talked about a sheriff's office hub as well as a Fountain PD hub. And I see on the slide that it lists an allocation of 8,000 square feet of building space. And that space is really to build upon partnerships with community. And how can we do the best to serve that southeastern portion of the county? You know, not only the City of Fountain, but also that whole area. We will need to work on some transportation in that area. But this will be a great opportunity within, you know, my 20-plus years, which we haven't had the opportunity to have this type of presence in the Fountain Valley area or in this region. So with this purchase, it will only, this will only be the beginning of the potential of services that we are able to offer, not only from public health, but what partnerships could we build? I know that there is a food pantry out there. We have partnered with other food pantries in southeast Colorado Springs to offer pop-up COVID testing sites, and we would hope to do something similar at this site. So the potential is great. The timing is short to use this funding, since it is, we have to spend it by the end of the year, and it has to be for COVID recovery and COVID response, in which we know the pandemic has exasperated those in need. And we will be in the recovery phase of this emergency response for the foreseeable time or many years to come. So with that, you know, any questions, I'd be happy to take. And I want to thank our Board of Health member also, who's been so helpful. Sam Geek, thank you in helping to move this forward, as well as Scott Trainer, and also Mayor Otega. Appreciate the support and the efforts to bring this to fruition.
Okay, you know, I'll get to questions here in a second. First of all, I don't know how much you hear this, but thank you to you and your staff for getting us through this COVID stuff as it is. Just all the work that you guys have been doing and with Dr. Kelly and everything just going on in our county and just kind of being on the front edge of that and leading us through that. I could tell you on our end, we really appreciated all the work and expertise that you've provided to us and making sure we're doing the best we can with it. So you know, on that front, I just want to say thank you. We haven't had a chance to speak on that issue, but I know you guys have been inundated with this for almost 24/7 for the last, what, six months now? And so we do appreciate that. Past that, I'm looking forward to this thing happening and, you know, everything that you talked about tonight and just the opportunities that it's gonna raise. Again, like you said, not just the City of Fountain, but the Valley, southern Colorado Springs, I think, just having that, where a lot of the population is that really utilizes those types of services. And so we do appreciate the even thought of looking at us first and figuring out how we can make it work. So we do appreciate that. I'm gonna open up to questions. If anybody from council has any questions, Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'll echo what the mayor said. Thank you. We have a senior center that is, you know, just really close up the street from there. With your immunizations there, is it only limited to children, or are they gonna be maybe to have a drive-through flu shot clinic? Because so many of our seniors are, you know, staying at home, or because the senior center is closed. So that would be, I think that would be really important. I think that would be a great thing if we could offer that.
Yeah, we're willing to, you know, have those discussions. And I think that, you know, during this COVID response and recovery, the need for innovation to make sure that whatever age folks are, that they're getting their preventative vaccinations, and the one that's on my mind right now is a flu vaccine. So that's something that we would work with, you know, either the organization to provide flu shots, or we can figure out, you know, some way to get those resources available. And within COVID, since we don't want to gather people, that's where we're thinking about the drive-through injections for flu vaccinations.
Okay, awesome. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Geek.
Yeah, I would just like to thank everybody that was involved in this. Todd, Scott, Susan, all her people. The board members were really excited about being able to partner with City of Fountain, and I thought that was very important to have that happen. We do need to figure out something for transportation, and I'm sure we're gonna be able to work that out. It just was really nice to see something come this way that we really need.
Yeah.
And people of Fountain and the people in the area. I mean, you don't realize it, but whenever we were talking about the Fountain Valley area, one of the board members thought it was just the 30,000 people that live in Fountain. Well, there's an eighth of the population in the county that lives in this area. And I think that's really important that we have something down here. And I know Phil, the former mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, he was adamant about getting some facilities down here, and I think it's about time. So I really hope that we can make this work, and I hope everybody will support this item.
And Mayor, one comment, just to let everybody know, the transit piece that Sam brings up, we've been talking to Sharon and getting PPACG. Ylana Avila, who's on the city council up in Colorado Springs, is a big proponent. So Lexi is right now working on bringing all the individuals together. That's a tough herd to bring together on a time that works for everybody. But we are gonna be as open as possible with Fountain Metro Transit. And the plan right now, we will have one of our bus stops at their, basically their front door the day they open for Fountain Metro Transit. So we're planning on working with Mountain Metro as much as we can to bring in those folks from their stops in security, do everything we can to make sure that the transit is available, and it's very simple for folks to get down there. And Susan had brought up the possibility of a substation for Fountain PD and the Sheriff's Office. So we had Chris start those conversations, Chief Heber, with Sheriff's Office. Sheriff's Office was very excited to partner with them to do that. So that's a win-win, not only for Fountain PD having a substation in that area, but also the Sheriff's Office having a substation in the Fountain Valley, which they have not had down there. We had one years ago in the old security shopping area, but that, I think we got rid of that 15 years ago. So that's a big win-win for them that Susan mentioned, so everybody's excited about that opportunity as well.
Okay, all right. I don't see any other questions from council members. Again, Susan, you know, I just want to make sure you understand and how excited we are about this. And thank you for, again, you know, kind of working the things there. And I do want to, you know, kind of give a shout out to Todd. You know, I was talking to him almost on a daily basis about this, and he was putting in some time and some hours on making sure we can make this thing work. And so Todd, you know, I know you did a lot to help, you know, in just in working and kind of brokering a deal between the county and the owners and making sure we can get as much out as we can. So, you know, on behalf of the council, thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate that. So unless there's any other comments from, go ahead, Susan.
I just wanted to echo that, that if it would not, if it weren't for Mr. Evans, this deal probably would have not been going through. It's, you know, he's, I've known him for a long time, and he has some just incredible leadership skills. And he helped us out tremendously and making sure too that my Board of Health wholly, in coordination with Mr. Geek, knew that the City of Fountain was very supportive and could do, you know, would be willing to partner with us and not only with what we have, you know, that we're presenting today, but in the future. And the possibilities to serve the community is great. And I know I can count on Mr. Evans, and just wanted to echo what you had said, because the City of Fountain has always been so supportive, the council, to the police chief, to Scott Trainer. We were able to bring the Community's Care Grant to the city for youth substance use prevention, and not because the city has more, you know, substance use among youth, it's because the leadership, that you guys are all ready to take action quickly and move, you know, when opportunities arise. And so we, at Public Health, value the partnership, and I look forward to the potential and the return on investment and the outcomes that we're going to see in the southeastern portion of the county. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susan.
I got one more thing, too.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Commissioner Gonzalez supported this too, so that, and he's on the board. So that was another person that was, I think he was kind of divided on which area, because they were wanting it in southeast Colorado Springs, and he represents that area too. So he was kind of, but he supported both places.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted to make sure he was mentioned.
Okay, all right. With that, I will go ahead, and if there's no other questions, I mean, let me check one more time with the public, so I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay, come on up, Mr. Rick.
Just a quick question for Mr. Evans. Is the street department, in doing this project, going to have to defer or delay any of the projects that were already scheduled in order to get this done?
Oh, that's a great question, and we should address that.
Because we've got a lot of them coming, don't we? No, we're planning on doing this on weekends for them, so won't delay anything else. It's a good question, yeah.
Okay, and same with funds. I mean, we've got things worked out that, you know, things aren't gonna get pushed back or anything like that. So it's all, it's a complete win-win for everybody, so we're very excited about it. So thank you. And I see no questions from public. So Ms. Duncan.
I move to approve Resolution 20-073.
And Mr. Geek?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, please, Ms. Joanie.
Mayor Otega, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote? Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Susan, again, for all your hard work with this, and we look forward to um, opening up and getting business going.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone. Bye-bye.
Take care. All right, that's exciting, exciting, exciting. That's one of those 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 wins that you you're not really expecting, but man, in the middle of all this, that's a, that's a really good thing. And. Um, if something good can come out of all of it, that's a, that's one of those good things. So.
Thank you, council. Thank you all.
Yeah, I know. Um, but yeah, this is, man, that's really a good thing. So, okay, we'll move on to item nine C. Resolution two zero dash zero seven four, a resolution authorizing the approval of a. Quick claim deed related to the El Paso County Hanson Trailhead Project, transferring the city's property interest to El Paso County. Um, looks like we have Mr. Johnson on, go ahead.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. Um, this one's should be pretty easy and short. Uh, this is an item we were approached by El Paso County. Um, they are beginning the kind of the due diligence process of of what they're calling the Hanson Trailhead Project in the Fountain Creek. And they stumbled upon a parcel of land that has kind of shifted over time. Um, and it's really unclear who owns it. Um, and us being uh, the City of Fountain as one of the stakeholders in the area. Um, uh, kind of might or might not have a claim to it. And so this is just. Uh, a quick claim deed saying whatever interest we have, we're going to give to the county uh, if any. So that they can kind of continue moving forward on their uh, trailhead project. Uh, and so uh, without uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it, but that's all I have.
Okay, any questions from council?
That's pretty simple.
I'm not seeing on any from public. Okay, uh, we can make a motion. Mr. Applegate.
Yeah. I move to approve resolution, resolution twenty dash zero seven four.
And Ms. Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Um, Ms. Joanie.
Mayor Pro Tem, or I'm sorry, Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote? Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, Ms. Uh, Joanie, I keep, I want to say Ms. Huffman.
I know.
Okay. All right, um, on to uh, the meat of our meeting. Um, item number D, resolution or council, let me start over. Item nine D, council workshop for electric rate. Study review, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Blankenship.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, Dan Blankenship, uh, Utilities Director. That this evening here to talk to you about uh, recent cost of service and and rate design study. Uh, this spring, we uh, received a proposal from our rate review consultant. Uh, to review our cost of service and our rates. Uh, the most recent uh, cost of service and rate study was completed in September of twenty eighteen. Uh, it's important to review rates on a regular basis to ensure that uh, that our rates are appropriately recovering the costs of providing service. And meeting our customer needs. A a point that I think is really important to note is that we are a cost of service electric utility. Therefore, our rates are designed to uh, only recover the cost of what it takes to to serve our customers uh, and and nothing more. Uh, the primary driving factor uh, on this rate review uh, is our desire or need to establish a totally second. Uh, interconnection point um, to the Colorado Springs Utilities Transmission System. Uh, currently, we have a a a single point of connection. Uh, we do have two circuits that are connecting, but they are on the same uh, on the same structure. So it's essentially a single point of fa- failure. So in order to significantly reduce um, the risk of a total system or almost total system failure associated with our transmission. Uh, it's very important for us to uh, obtain this second interconnection point. Uh, although uh, the it's not the only identified capital improvement need of the system, it's certainly by far the most costly. Uh, I do want to say that it's e- e- even though that we are uh, through this study, we are proposing and recommending that uh, there be a rate. Uh, increase. Uh, the vast majority of our customers will still pay less per kilowatt hour. Uh, of electricity than our neighboring utilities will remain as one of the lowest uh, utilic- cost utilities in the state. Uh, and our average residential bills in twenty twenty-one will still be less than they were in twenty fourteen. And that's attributable to all the work that uh, that the utility staff has done over the years to really significantly reduce our cost of purchasing electricity. Uh, the bottom line is, you know, with with the proposed rate increases, we will be able to add a very significant level of reliability to our electric system. While still remaining as one of the lowest cost providers in the state. Uh, we have prepared a schedule um, that would result in the new rates being effective on January first of twenty twenty-one, and that is subject to council's uh, approval. Uh, however, I do want to say that really we're here to educate you so that you can make good decisions, educated decisions. And to educate the our our public, our our customers, uh, so that they understand that we are trying to do what is in their best interests. So I just want to say, well, we will pass out, and I think uh, Brett Robinson has a a copy of this schedule. We'll pass this out to you. And I just want you to know that uh, we are very flexible with this. And at any time that you feel that or the. Our our ratepayers feel that we need to slow things down just a little bit, uh, we're we're happy to do that. Uh, we're here to do what's in the best interest of our ratepayers, uh, and and that is the bottom line. Uh, with me this evening, I have our rate consultant, John Kratsky, who is going to make a presentation. Uncle Head, he can step up. Uh, Brett Robinson, our customer service manager, is the project manager. Uh, and Carl Christian, our deputy uh, director of utilities, is also here this evening. And and he'd be happy to answer any questions that you have uh, about our capital improvement needs, in particular, the uh, the second. Uh, interconnection point to the Colorado Springs Transmission System a- and the extension of our uh, of our transmission system. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Kratsky.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Ortega, members of the council. Um, congratulations, this is your, uh, this is my first city council meeting presentation since uh, March. So you're you're my guinea pig, and I wasn't sure if I should leave the mask on, but I think I'm far enough.
I think you're okay.
From everybody that I can.
This is our first uh, attempt at in-person, so thank you.
Well, I uh, I mean, I I did, you know, just by way of background, I should, uh, I just have two people in my office, and we shut down in mid-March. Uh, I I live in Lincoln, Nebraska. We did not have a statewide lockdown like many other states, but. Um, you know, I think it was in our best interest, uh, I went two and a half months without seeing my uh, my assistant, my uh, admin manager. So uh. You know, we we've, just like everybody, learned to work uh, very closely and did a lot of the work on this study uh, remotely. So uh. It's a new times and we're getting through it. So. Um, just by way of background, I want to go to my next slide, please. And I understand you're on, you, there's some desire to kind of keep this short, so I'll do that. And I know there's going to be future opportunities, as Brett will talk about, for you all to talk about these rate changes. Uh, Mr. Blankenship did a great job of pretty much telling you everything that was in my presentation, but I'll go into some additional detail. Um, so last time he did a rate study, like he said, two thousand eighteen. At that time, we recommended a three percent rate increase. And uh, that went across the board. Pretty much all your rate classes saw some form of a rate increase. Uh, we increased the system development charge from nine hundred and fifty-three to a thousand forty-three dollars. And the line extension charge uh, went from five hundred dollars to seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That was a pretty significant increase, but as near as we could tell, it'd been a number, it had been quite a while since that had been updated. We weren't even sure that. There was any analytics done to develop that five hundred dollar number. So uh, that was all done in two thousand eighteen. Now, the purpose of this study, next slide, is to uh, review, obviously, I'm here to review your electric rates. And we're planning to develop rates that uh, accomplish a number of goals. We went through these on a, on a Microsoft Teams call in May. Went through all the um, the goals that we have in terms of increasing revenue, making sure your your rates are cost of service, not just on a broad basis. But that individual customer classes are paying a fair rate. A uh, we discussed wanting to implement a single rate increase, uh, and that that should say fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So uh, we looked at not just this year, but also the next year. And so wanted to develop a two-year rate plan. So that we come to city council and say, we're implementing two years of this rate change uh, to help fund these capital improvements, fund operating expense increases. And I think the last one, the city's done a great job of keeping your rates competitive with your neighbors. A lot of times when you're in a growing city, I mean, it's it's kind of the opposite of what you see like with businesses. A growing city ends up tending to have higher rates than those cities that aren't growing. Uh, the cities that aren't growing don't have to build new infrastructure. They can rely on ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year-old infrastructure to serve their rate base. Electric line costs increase over time. Uh, power costs increase over time. So all those things uh, factor in that if you're a growing community, you you may end up having. Higher rate increases than a city that isn't growing, because they're not having to rebuild lines, they're not having to build new substations. So. Um, the fact that you've been able to maintain very competitive rates is a testament to your staff. They've done a great job managing your distribution system. Um, and I think you've also made, as the council made some very good decisions with regard to power supply resources and other decisions that you've had to make. Next slide, please. Uh, the last part of the study is that we are updating the system development charge with the new capital improvement plan. Um, that will be uh, and also updating the line extension fee based on the new proposed retail rates. So as I go through here, um, the folks in the room, if you want to raise your hand and and ask a question, please do. Uh, I I can't see the folks on the on the on the uh. So I'll 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 look for a cue from the mayor or somebody else.
I got him here, so.
What's that? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, he's talking to that mascot, I couldn't tell, so.
Oh, no, yeah, no, we're good.
Okay, so next slide, please. So there's really two rate components that are part of that that you pass through to your customers. Uh, the first part is your base rates. That covers the cost of your distribution lines, uh, costs of your customer accounting, sending out bills every month. Uh, administrative and general expenses, uh, having Mr. Blankenship and the other staff around to to run the system. And then. The really the biggest component in this study is those capital improvements. Uh, it's it's not just the ongoing improvements of your local system, but as. As Carl said, talking about, you know, building that new interconnection. I mean, right now, you have the equivalent of of your whole house being run off a single extension cord. And you know, if somebody kicks that extension cord out of the wall, your whole house is going to go out. And and so, you know, this is a. It's, I will say that of cities this size, and I, it's not a criticism necessarily of. Of any planning you've done in the past, you've grown very quickly compared to your neighbors. Uh, but you definitely have reached a point where having that second uh, feed, that second transmission loop that that can back you up is a. Is incredibly important. Um, the folks in California the last week or so are finding out how how important reliability is. Uh, you know, if if you have lost that line on a very hot day like yesterday, you would have had some very concerned customers. And and that's not to say that it wouldn't have been restored quickly, but that, having that second feed will make that more seamless and enable you to first to serve growth in the future. So. The second part of the rate components uh, is the energy rates, and that's just a pass-through. You have purchase power agreements with XL Energy, used to be Twin Eagle. Uh, with Western Area Power Administration, you have the new Pueblo Hydro uh, project as well. And then uh, with Colorado Springs Utilities, they provide the transmission service to get the power from from midway through their system to your, to your, your system. All those energy rates are done on a pass-through basis. So each month you calculate what the cost is, and you'll see a fluctuating energy cost adjustment. Uh, next slide. That's just a breakdown of the internal cost versus the power cost. So that's a good ratio right there. About sixty percent of your costs are related to the power of the transmission. So. Uh, projects, we'll go next slide here. Uh, so this, this is the uh, again, the biggest factor in this rate study is the capital improvement plan. Uh, we had included about seven and a half million dollars of financing two years ago. Uh, clearly, the plan uh, became a lot more robust, and I think it's a great plan that you have put together. Uh, it comes with a cost, and that cost is going to be some phased-in rate increases over the next few years to to fund this. Um, we assume that about fifty-five million dollars would be would be paid over the next five years uh, in phases. Issuing tax-exempt bonds to fund those, much as you've done already. So eight million in bonds was issued, were were issued in two thousand nineteen. Uh, to begin uh, the early phases of those projects. So next slide, projected financing, financial results. Uh, I worked with the city staff, and and I. Usually did this at the beginning, but I thought staff did a great job of putting information together, uh, Mr. Lewis and and all the other folks. Uh, very responsive in in terms of getting data to me as I needed. So. The uh, projected operating results, about four point four million dollar deficit by twenty twenty-five. That's if you do nothing. If you just let rates where they are. Um, four point four million dollars, you don't have that much in reserves. Uh, I doubt you'd be able to issue the bonds for the tri- transmission improvements if you got to that point without putting a rate plan in place. There will, uh, what we've included in our rate plan is two four percent rate increases, one that would be effective January of two, of twenty twenty-one. A second one that would be January of twenty twenty-two. So the single council action would implement both of those rate changes. Uh, do anticipate there will be some additional rate increases beyond twenty-two, um, as the additional phases of the project come into, come into place. Any questions on that? Yes, ma'am.
For those people that are listening, can you take just a really couple sentences and explain the difference between a rate increase and a base increase? Because not everybody might.
Yeah.
Understand that.
For purposes of this, there is a. There is no, it's it's a rate increase, base rate increase. It's, we're increasing the base, the the component that covers the cost of administrative and general customer. Counting uh, interconnection costs. That's the part that's going in. That that's the specific component that's getting an increase. And it's an overall, it's a rate increase for all customers, though, uh, because that you're increasing that component, we're leaving the energy component the same. So. It is a, it is a rate increase. So that, I I apologize if there is any lack of clarity there, so.
Okay, keep going.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So the cost of service results as Dan, as uh, Mr. Blankenship indicated, four percent, I mean, there's a, we do everything on a cost of service basis. Uh, here my next slide. Okay, there we go, thank you. Uh, overall, we're looking at a four percent increase. Um, we look at each class to determine if, how far off from that that four percent they are. Uh, so the largest, you know, the largest rate increase needed would be like at the residential level, which is four point two percent. And and so large commercial, uh, would it be a two point seven percent? So if we'd gone through each class and said, we're going to make these rates exactly the cost of service. We would have gone two point seven percent for large commercial, four point two percent for residential. This is actually a pretty tight band, uh, when we do the cost of service analysis. Uh, I've seen places where if there's a four percent rate increase, you'd have customers that were, that were uh, at one percent and others that are ten percent. And then then you've got to start smoothing those out and bringing them closer to being in the cost of service. Based on this tight range, I'm not recommending that we we do any tweaking of rates for residential versus large commercial. We're going to increase all the rates four percent. Over the next two rate periods. Now, the uh, next slide, please. Uh, so we're going to do that across all all the classes. Uh, we are going to be adjusting the customer charge a little bit more than we're adjusting the energy charge. That is based on the cost of service results that indicated that you need to raise that rate. Uh, customer charge covers things like the wire that comes into your house, the cost of reading the meter, the cost of sending the bill out. The cost of having a minimally sized distribution system to deliver power to those customers. So. Uh, that will be going up a little bit more than the energy rate, but. And that's, again, that's based on the cost of service results. Uh, one last thing that we're looking at is, uh, there's a line item on your bill called energy cost adjustment. Uh, over the last couple of years, that's been a pretty significantly negative number, uh, based on, as as Dan indicated, your rates. You're paying less for power now than you were in two thousand fourteen, and that's when we set that. So we're going to, we're going to shift some of the money out of uh, out of that credit in and reduce the overall rate. So that it'll have no impact on the bill, but it'll reduce the amount that's in that energy cost adjustment. And increase the amount that's in the regular energy, energy rate on the bill. So we've done this a couple of times in the past, and it's it basically, it's a good practice for the utility, just to make sure their. Energy cost looks like it's about, it's recovering the amount that it should be. So, yes, ma'am. Yep.
You said the last study was in twenty eighteen, there was a three percent rate increase.
That's correct, yes.
So when did you do another one for the four percent?
Uh, the the four percent we're proposing in this study uh, would be implemented January first of twenty uh, twenty-one. That's and and Brett Robinson will talk about the the schedule and the implementation date for that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, I do have a question from, from the public. It says, not sure if you are familiar with our current rate. I believe it is .027 a kilowatt. So you are saying that this number will increase by 4%?
I think what they're talking about in, in our, is our, our current residential rate. We do have, we have, we actually have in, in the study, all of the, the proposed changes to, to the rates. And so the energy charge, our current residential energy charge is 7.2 cents per kilowatt hour. That would actually reduce to 6.8 cents per kilowatt hour to be more reflective of our actual costs of purchasing that power. Like Mr. Krasky was saying, you establish for the energy charge a, a base. And that's, was that base was established several years ago when we were paying a higher level. Now we're paying a lower level, so we've reduced that base. And so that our, our other charges, our, our customer charge, our delivery charge is more reflective of the actual cost. And then the, so the energy charge is also more reflective by making that change. So that, that part of the component of the rate will be going down.
Okay, and I just sent him back a reply to see if that answers his question. So he will.
And I'd always be happy if there's a, if it doesn't, I'd be happy if he wants to give me a call tomorrow. We, we can spend whatever time's necessary to answer that question.
Okay. So is the .027 raising 4%? I guess that's the main question.
It will be going, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the overall cost to the, to the customer, what they will see on their bill will be approximately 4% more. But the, the, the components are not being adjusted across the board 4%. They're being adjusted to be more reflective of the actual cost. So the energy charge will go from zero or, or 7.2 cents to 6.8 cents per kilowatt hour. It will actually drop.
Okay, so the, the 4% is just your overall, right?
Right, the bottom line on your bill.
Okay.
Bottom line. If you're, if you actually look at the line items on your bill, and I, I don't think that most customers do, but some do. But if you look at the line items, those will vary. But when you get to the bottom line, where most people look, where you write the check, that, that's where you will see approximate 4% increase in your cost.
Okay, and so some, so if I can further explain what we're saying. Portions of it may go down, portions of it may go up, but again, in overall, when we look at the total picture, it, it's that 4% that goes up.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay, yes, and that's, Mr. Rainville, that, that's the total bill increase 4%. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. I think we're okay right now. All right, I'm gonna, okay, I'll go ahead and keep going here. I talked about the energy cost adjustment already, so I don't get to go through this slide. Each crate, rate class is going up 4%. And again, I'll just reiterate what Dan said there. I mean, what, we, we look at the revenue you collected before, the revenue you collect after, and within each rate class, it's going up about 4%. If we go to the next slide, I think this is probably the critical number from a customer standpoint. The average residential bill is going to increase about $3.39. That's taken by, that's calculated by calculating the increased revenue divided by the number of customers and divided by 12. And I know, I know we did some other analyses, like for a, a typical, you know, we look at like a typical customer that uses 700 kilowatt hours. I think the number came to $3.11. So there's different ways to look at it. You look at the average, you can look at the typical bill for 700 kilowatt hours. So the typical average use customer is going to be in that $3.11 to $3.39 range. If you, if you have a bigger house, if you've got a 5,000 square foot house with two air conditioners and a movie theater, you might, you might have a bill go, your bill may go up $20. But for like that typical 700 kilowatt hour customer, which is fairly close to your average customer, it's going to be in that three, $3.39 range. So there will be a similar increase again in fiscal year 2022. So this is the, the fiscal year 2021 number. Again, I think this is an important point. You've made a lot of really good decisions over the last seven, eight, nine years. Even with this increase, a customer in 2021 is 700 kilowatt hour customers projected to have a lower bill than they had in 2014. In 2014, you're buying power from Mean, your, your rates were high, they had some regulatory issues. I'll say that you were, ended up paying a part of this bill for. Over the last couple of years, you switched to Twin Eagle, you got involved in the Pueblo Hydro project. Again, you've got the Guzman Agreement, which is going to save about 80 cents per month for your typical customer. And that's money that you can use to help fund these, these interconnection improvements to provide more reliable system for your customers going forward. Again, we looked at the CAMU rate survey, and you are definitely toward the bottom end of, in terms of, and I say bottom in a good sense. Your, your, your rates are among the lowest in the state. There are very few other municipal utilities and one other co-op that have lower rates than you. So that's, you are to be commended for having rates that are competitive like that. So, and again, that's, that's in spite of growth and all the costs that come with that, not everything else that, that in future capital improvements that you're looking at installing. So any que, and I, I won't go through each slide, you can look at those and they were in the presentation. But if, you know, if you want to just look on the screen here. You can see your rates are clear down, you know, definitely for the 700 kilowatt hour customer down there at the bottom. And then for the general service customer, again, very competitive as well, so.
So looking at this graph, we really aren't going to change position, it looks like, even with this rate increase.
I, I think, yeah, if you do change positions, it's going to be one or two spots.
Right.
And again, you know, this, this is an apples and oranges comparison. We're looking at the January of 2020 CAMU rate comparison.
Okay.
And I'm comparing what your race January 2021 will be. So to the extent these other folks have rate increases, which I know some of them do, and I, because I do rate work for some of these other folks. I know the pressures they're under. I think you're going to be in a good position in the next CAMU survey as well.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and you know, I, when this was coming forward, you know, I was telling the city manager, said, I hate when we have these. It's because we hate having to do these rate increases. But, you know, as you spoke about, we've got a lot of growth that we need to account for. And, and let me go back to as well that, understand that growth is paying its way as well. So, but this is just kind of natural. We need some of these things that are needed by our system anyway. And so mainly, I think for the, the redundancy piece and, you know, and just creating that safety net for our, our system that we haven't had and we desperately need. So any questions at this point as we move forward? Okay.
If we go, I'm going to go ahead and skip a couple of slides, just based on time, because
Okay.
You know, a lot of times with rate studies are kind of like making sausage. You really don't want to know all the semantics to go. You just care about what the end product is. So I'm going to talk about this, the SCC, the system development charge and the line extension fee. We looked at those in 2018. I'm just going to give you the results on these. Use the same methodology, and if we go one more slide, two more slides, there we go, right there. So the system development charge is intended to cover like the backbone costs, the major transmission, major feeder costs, the substations that go into serving the customer. These aren't the, the facilities that are located within the subdivision. These are the rest of your system. And so we use the same methodology to calculate this. Again, we have a more robust capital improvement plan with this proposal, with this rate study. So the SDC is proposed to go from $1,043 to $1,250. So again, this is in addition to the line extension fee, which I'll talk about next. And again, this is almost exclusively driven by the, the change in the capital improvement program and every, all the costs that are incumbent on that. So new development, new lots will pay this, this fee to basically help offset the cost that you, all the rest of your customers are, have funded for these types of improvements. There's, there's a table on the next slide if you want to look at the individual components, but most people don't want to look at that. So the line extension fee, I got one bit of good news here. So the line extension fee, we calculated using the same methodology. And it's based on, you look at how much net revenue you're going to collect from a customer, that's their, what they pay less than what you paid for power. And look at that on a five-year basis, on a net present value basis. So if you implement the rate change that we talked about before with the, for 2021, that would result in some additional net revenue, and costs have not increased as much, that much for the, for line extension. So we are actually proposing a decrease in the, in the line extension fee from $727 to $711. So that, that will offset a little bit of it. But again, that's primarily driven by the rate increase for 2021, that you're collecting more through the rates that can be used to offset part of this system, part of this line extension fee. So that's all the findings. I'm just going to hit the conclusions, and I know Brett's got some information on the schedule. But next slide, 4%, 4% rate increases are necessary this year and again next year. We're proposing that that would be implemented as a single rate ordinance or a single rate schedule that would go into effect January 1st. The first increase would hit with those bills that are for January service. The next rate increase would hit in the January 2022 timeframe. So, and, and I will say that based on the capital improvement plan, both of those rate increases will be needed to fund, to fund the, the debt that you're planning to issue. Your rates will still be competitive with your neighbors. I think that's a very important factor as well. So with that, I'm open to any other questions. And then I can, then I will turn it over to Brett. There's some very specific rules under Colorado statute that I, I, I miss working with Bill McEwen, the attorney. You know, I was disappointed to hear, I, I've known Bill for probably 30 years. I knew Bill for 30 years. I met him in the early 1990s. And was sad to hear of his passing. I know that your new attorney and the city staff is very familiar with the processes for getting this rate change put into place. So I'll look forward to working with them. I know I'll be here for another city council meeting to, to, to have a, to, to go through this again and help put this on the agenda if there's any questions. Brett, are you ready to talk about schedule and process then?
Okay, let me see if there's any questions for you while we're, any questions at this point? Before Brett gets on, I'm going to check with Greg. He doesn't have his light on. Do you want to ask your question now, Mr. Rick? You wait, okay. Okay, sounds good.
Quick question.
Okay.
It's been a really, really long, hot, dry summer, really, you know, until today. Now my house doesn't know what to do, air conditioning and heating. Anyways, but it's just been a really long, I think I heard on the news 55 days this, this year that were over 95 degrees. It's like a new state record. Is our energy, overall energy use in the city developing, reflecting that? And plus people being home more, you know, with working from home, is this kind of like a double whammy?
Right.
So it, do you
Defer to my, either Carl or to Brett. Carl, if you want to go ahead and take a shot at that.
Yeah, our, our current load growth, we're on a 2.9% annual increase of load. With the stay-at-home COVID roughly March, April, our energy use went up 22%. Not our demand, but our energy use. Our demand, we did hit a high demand, the biggest, the largest demand, peak demand that fountain has ever hit. Our transformers are running around 85 to 90% capacity, a few of them. So that's, that's why this is very important to get redundancy just to our existing customers, but our, our load is increasing.
No, I just, I, I know we've all, we've heard rumors and heard a lot of people talking, they're just really frustrated, their energy bills are so high this year. And I just was wondering, is our load capacity bearing out that people really are using a lot, a lot? It's just hot and it's not cooling off in the evenings, you know, you can't normally open your windows. And especially now we have the smoke this last few days when it was extremely hot, you couldn't open your windows to cool off. So, so we are really using a lot of electricity as a city, and that's reflected in, in what we're doing.
Absolutely, and if anybody has any questions on their bills, we'll gladly meet with them and go over if they think their bills are.
And I think I read in our weekly report that we had given out a very large sum of money through Colorado Energy Efficiency. Or, I mean, I have the name right, but like $38,000 this year to assist people with their
Yeah, I want to, I want to say there were 232 people that we had served out of the Light and Load Fund. I want to say that we assisted with almost $40,000. I want to say it's 38 and some change in, since March until this timeframe. EOC is what you're referring to, and those funds have been made available due to COVID. So a lot more funds are available to assist folks. So we have really put a lot of effort into marketing assistance programs for the community because of the higher loads and because folks are out of work. More folks are home, more usage is, is being drawn from the system, more water is being consumed. And so naturally, we have more sales and we have more folks that are struggling out there. So we have done additional inserts and additional marketing to try to promote these funds that have been made available through the partnering agencies to assist some of the community that is out here. And I can give you those dollar amounts in detail. I just don't have them exactly.
No, that, that's okay. The summary is good enough. And, and those are still available though, so if people would like to call you and they haven't been assisted yet, they can, they can still call utilities and have access to that. Because whenever you discuss rates, you know, it, it's just really tough this year and a lot going on. I just want to make sure that we're, we're just saying, we understand people are struggling, we understand it's really hard. But we have a very reliable energy source in this city, and 99% of the time you flip a switch and it's there. And that 1% time it doesn't, Carl's out there taking care of it. So thank you very much.
Okay, I, I think we're good. Brett, you want to?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council, for allowing us to speak. We have a tight schedule in order to meet our January 1st deadline of, if the rate is approved. We would have to have the final notice submitted to some of our vendors by September 14th. And then we are authorized to show publication into the newspapers and put it out for publication for public notice by a certain date. So that date is September 25th. In order to meet that deadline, we would have to have it postmarked and say, and mailed to customers for that notice by September 23rd. By the 18th, we would have to submit it to the papers for publication. And that is so that we can go for approval of the new rates around October 27th. And then if approved, the rate would take effect in January 1st of 2021.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate that that, you know, that's the schedule that we've put together to make the, the rates effective on the, on the first of next year. But we are prepared and, and, and more than willing to, you know, adjust that schedule as needed to ensure that you guys feel that you have the information and knowledge to make an educated decision and that our ratepayers understand exactly what we're doing. So we've established this schedule, but, you know, at any point in time that we need to pull the brake and slow things down, if, if need be, we're, we're prepared to do, prepared to do that.
Okay, and I, I want to further clarify that statement in. We'll do that if the, if the arguments are compelling. And, and I don't want a filibuster occurring, and I just don't want my rates raised. And so I'm going to, you know, start arguing with you about it. But they need to be compelling arguments, and we're making a compelling argument on our side. And, and I want to make sure we're, we're doing what's best for the entirety of the ratepayers, not just those living in City of Fountain, because we have a lot to do not live in a city of Fountain as well, so we do represent them as well in this case. So we will work hard to ensure that this is going to be beneficial. And granted, we don't like these rate increases, but sometimes they're a necessity, and, you know, we just have to do it. Ms. Duncan?
I, I guess I'm just asking questions because I really didn't get to, and I'm new. But how often do we do rate studies?
The, the most recent one was two years ago. John, do you, do you recall prior to that? Okay, so, so in, in this case, the, okay. So, so there was three years between 2015 and 2018, and two years. And what's really, really driving this one is, is the need for that second interconnection point. We, we might have gone another year without having that need. But we really feel that it's, we need to bring that forward for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Is that good? Okay, Mr. Rick, you had a question?
Apologize, Mr. Mayor, I got three for Mr. Blankenship. The 700 kilowatt per customer, where did we come up with that number? The reason I'm asking, according to the US Energy The reason I'm asking, according to the U S Energy Administration, it's the, the number they quote is nine hundred and nine kilowatt hours per, per month, per, for, per customer. Where do we come up with the seven hundred?
The seven hundred is a number that's used by the Colorado Municipal Utilities Association. And that's what they do their survey with and so that we can benchmark off of their survey that, that's what we use. I'm familiar with the E I A. And so we actually, Brett, you have, yes, sir. What, what we, what I, what I did was also took a look at, in addition to the seven hundred, I looked at five hundred and I looked at a thousand to, to see where, where that would land. Percentage wise, at seven hundred, where the, if someone uses seven hundred kilowatt hours, their bill will go up approximately four percent. If they use a higher amount than that, closer to a thousand, they're going to be at about three point seven five percent. And if they use less, if they use five hundred, they're going to be about four and a third percent. The reason for that variation i- is because you're paying a fixed customer charge. And, and so when you start, when you, when you use lower kilowatt hours, you know, you're kind of, you're, you're, the more kilowatt hours you use, then that spreads that customer's charge. So as you, as you use more than that, customer service charge per kilowatt hour starts to diminish. But every, all, all the rest of the components of the rate are based on the, on the kilowatt hours.
Okay, I understand that. Do we know what our actual average for a fountain utility customer is?
Um, we've always said that it varies between seven to eight hundred. Now I'd have to recalculate that due to the higher volume. But you also have to take into effect that we have some high consumers out here. So the range can vary anywhere from a couple hundred up to, we have users that use five thousand and above. And it just depends on their usage, what apparatuses and devices that they have in their home. If you have more refrigerators, more A C units, if you have a refrigerator that's running out in the heat in the shed where it's not, or it's in the garage and it's not a climate controlled area, it's going to work harder naturally. Now that we're dealing with COVID and more folks are commuting and teleworking from home, they're moving higher because they're running their A C. It's also dependent on the temperature. So I can't definitively say what the actual average is. It just varies from home to home. You may not use the same, have the same usage pattern that your neighbor does.
We can, we can certainly, we can certainly calculate that number. Pull it out.
Just curious.
Yeah.
When did the, the line extension fee? I looked at the annual average over residential came up to eighty in their kilowatt hours per year, which corresponds to about seven hundred and thirty three kilowatt hours per month. Thank you.
Like seven thirty three? Okay.
Your actual- Then we're, then we're using numbers that are close to what's being actually used. So that's good. In our water usage, our water rates, we have different tiers.
Yes, sir.
So you pay more-
Correct.
They stop your usage. Do we use tiers for electricity?
We, we do not.
Okay. That's all.
And that's sending in, and if you want to stop and visit sometime, we can talk about how the philosophy behind that. Be happy to do that. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no problem. I do have a question from public. Is a potential rate increase used to pay for the power station being built at CNS and link to the substation? And I thought that project was already budgeted. When is the second interconnection projected to be built?
The, Mr. Christian?
Yes, that, that project has already been budgeted. What, the majority of this capital is to get another source of transmission into that new substation. And once it's in that substation, it will back up and feed all of our existing infrastructure currently right now. I say we're radio fed and our, our future outlook is to have all of our future substations loop fed. So this is just part of getting loop into our existing customer and the new substation.
Okay.
So what we call Jimmy Camp Creek Substation is currently funded and will be constructed with money that already is budgeted.
Okay. And he said, thank you. He said, excellent, thanks. All right, with that, any other questions from council and/or public? I'm checking on Mr. Lauer if he has any questions. His light's not on. Okay, well, I'll go ahead. Mr. Geek?
How do fountain residents that don't use fountain utilities? What's the chances of where I live, will fountain soon be out there?
Yes, we're, we're working diligently on that, Sam.
I'm paying, I'm paying those higher rates, so.
Yeah, I, it's been, it's been our intent for years and years and years to serve everybody who, who we can serve, who is in our certi- certificated needed territory. The problem is on a business decision of running a power line out to serve where you currently live is not a good business decision, but as that annexes, as, as we annex thing, it obligates us to serve. Once we get infrastructure out towards your house, we have, we've met with Mountain View. This year we have full intentions of serving the customers that we have the ability to serve.
Thank you.
Good question. All right. Okay, if no other questions, I'm checking again. I think we're good. Just wanted to say thank you for coming out and joining us in the middle of our stuff here and, you know, and, and helping us get moving forward with this. So with that, there's no decisions tonight, so that's good. I was gonna ask for a motion, but we don't have one tonight. So we do look forward to when, so according to this, you probably be coming back in late October? Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so public that are on tonight are listening and for the paper who gets this information out as well. Just remember to, to kind of read over the information and, and if you have any, you know, grave concerns and things like that, we can, you know, make sure that we can answer those questions in that time and, and be ready to go. I have one more question. Mayor, I wanted to add that being from the East Coast where rates are thirty cents a kilowatt, fountain rates are very reasonable, so thanks for-
Yeah, thank you for that comment.
Yeah. And reliable as well, yeah. Okay, thanks, Mr. Raindell. Okay, again, thank you for that. So we will move on. Item number ten, correspondence, comments and ex officio reports. And I'm gonna start with Mr. Evans tonight.
Mayor, thank you. I'm, I'm just gonna keep reiterating, Mr. Rick brought it up earlier tonight. We've got one month left in our infrastructure or road construction season. So we're gonna keep pushing to get these projects completed that you're seeing out there. You're gonna see more flashing signs notifying the public, but whenever you get a chance, please let them know. We've got a big project that we're gonna be finishing up on Link Road. We did and, and I commend Mr. Johnson if he's still out there. He's been working diligently to get all the developers along the link and Kane Road and Squirrel Creek area to get their financial commitments in the bank and their signatures. And, and he's completed a lot of that this week. So we will see the lowering of the hill as you approach Squirrel Creek on Link Road. That will be in progress here in the next couple of weeks. But that along with the two intersections that are being built, it's gonna be a bad time to be on Link Road heading that way. And I, that's right. I know that disrupts a lot of folks, but we've got to, we've got to do that to get that construction completed. And it will be a very nice corridor once we get it done. Old Pueblo Road, the reconstruction of Old Pueblo Road right now is scheduled to start on September twenty first. But every time we have these three day weather events, it does not help us keep those schedules because we're dependent on contracted companies coming in. So several still big projects coming up and just please, any chance you get, let the public know. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Yeah, and just with that, with the public, you know, I, I see a lot of critical comments about, well, school's starting now or this is happening. Just realize that, that these are month long processes to get these to these point where they are. So it's not, we just decided, hey, last week, let's go ahead and do this project. There's, there's a lot of timing, a lot of things involved in, in, in addition to trying to get all this done before the weather hits and they shut down asphalt plants for the season. So while it is a, a hindrance upon what's going on, these are projects that are desperately needed to occur and happen. And so, you know, we're gonna do the best we can to make sure we're getting them done quickly and, and as efficiently as possible. But in order to, to have the, the roads we, we want, we need to, you know, spend some time on them. So go ahead, Todd.
One last thing, Mayor, I, I appreciate the good words coming from Councilman Geek, but I think he's selling himself short. And you as well as how much you were all doing everything you could on that other side. So Sam missed a couple of days of work. He did many other things to make sure Fountain was represented at every one of those, those meetings. So I, again, I just, it, it, I think it makes all of us feel good to bring those services down to the entire Fountain Valley and Southeast Colorado Springs.
Yeah.
So I just appreciate it. I really enjoy working with folks that are willing to make those sacrifices and he can look the other way, but he did a bunch of that. So we really appreciate it and thank you, Mayor, for all the calls and all the meetings and everything you did. We appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it was important to set moving forward, I think, for this community and for the valley. And of course, you know, and as much as they don't want to admit it, even in Southern Colorado Springs is gonna get some benefit out of this as well. And it's a heck of a trick to try to get up to guard of the gods. And if we can shorten that a lot, we're gonna do it. So you know what? We're gonna do what we need to do for our people. So, okay, let me see who's next. Troy, anything tonight?
Nothing else to add for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blankenship?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Christian, Carl, how are you?
Good, just since we brought up the, the new Jimmy Camp Creek Substation, we're still looking at the breaking ground in December and hopefully have it online, ready to energize by June of two thousand and twenty one. So other than that, it's great to see everybody in person.
Yeah, it is.
I appreciate this.
Yeah.
And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Brett, anything tonight further?
Yes, sir. If anybody has any questions about their utility bill, please call me directly. I will go over it personally with you. Also, I can provide a listing of all our partnering agencies for assistance for those that are in the community.
Okay, great, thank you. That's important. And as well for others who, who may have the, the means and, and, and the funds able to do that, that, you know, we, we have an opportunity as rate pairs as well to help pitch into those funds to help others out. So if you're, if you're willing and, and want, and would like to, there's opportunities as well for you to, to give to those organizations as well. And we're getting that time of year where we kind of ramp up the campaign a little bit just because we're getting in those colder months and want to make sure people's heat is on and then ready to go. So thank you, Brett. Paul, anything from I T?
Just one quick item. Thank you for your patience as we work on replacement of the clock here in the council chambers. The previous clock failed on us and I'm working on a replacement, hoping to have that here soon. So thank you for bearing with us as we take care of that for you. Other than that, I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay, thanks to you and, and the rest of I T for just keeping us going with this. And, and I think we found a program that at least for now that will, will keep us moving forward and, and allowing everyone to, to participate in our council meetings. But I know you guys have been working really hard with, with COVID and, and the new stay at home work thing that we're doing. So again, thanks to all you and your team. Mr. Trilch, I know you're on tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Only thing I had for this evening was just to add a little bit and pile on to Todd's comments about all the projects that are going on. The Streets Department and G I S has done a really good job of putting together a great map of all of those projects. It's on the city's website under the hot topics portlet, right on the main page. If you click that link, it'll launch the map and you can zoom in and hover over a portion of the map that's highlighted and it'll describe to you what the project is, what, what the dates are of closures and provide additional information. So a very useful tool to the public and encourage everybody to check that out. That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trilch. Ms. Joanie, anything from City Clerk's office?
Nothing from us, thank you.
Okay, and I will hit council up. Ms. Duncan, anything further tonight?
The wrong button. And the youth council is still scheduled to meet on September the twenty third at six o'clock. And we will have a link set up for those who have signed. We have a, a small number of students that have requested to be a part, but that's okay. Not everyone is interested in government, but you know, COVID will pass and we'll be able, you know, one thing that COVID allows us to do is be creative. So we will continue to move forward with our youth council. And I'm sure that by the, when COVID is over, we'll be glad we kept going.
And are you still accepting applications?
We are still accepting applications. We had the deadline, just to say, you know, this was a deadline. So people have something to look forward to, but any student that would like to participate, we still, you can still go online and submit your application.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Yes, I would just like to thank everybody for the support that we got for this building and with the things that are going forward with the health department. And I really, really appreciate everybody's help. Thank you.
Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Evans for his hard work on the roads around town and keeping things organized. And the thing at C N S, Mark Shuffle and Link, it looks like it's, I guess we need lights and stripe going and open, but I hope that's soon. And that will be great for the people going Mark Shuffle to C N S, but it ain't gonna help Link because they're gonna soon work on that other. But thanks, Todd, for staying on top of everything.
Ms. Estes?
I want to join the Todd Evans bandwagon and tell him thank you. And also a big shout out to Bob McDonald with the Streets Department for all the hard work they're doing with very little funds that we give them. And I called in about a pothole and it was fixed the next day. And so I appreciate that and just keep up the great work.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Let us echo everybody's comments, thanking Sam and Todd and you for everything you did to get the, to get the public health situation and, and a facility down in this area. Really appreciate that. Thanks to Todd as was said, for keeping the road situation squared away. And thanks to technology, which can allow somebody to suffer through a near debilitating migraine and still participate in a council meeting. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to still be able to do this with the lights off and almost no sound. That was really helpful.
Okay, and Ms. Thompson?
I'd like to thank everybody too, but Todd, your head's gonna get too big over there. Anybody else, thank you. I would just like to remind everybody to slow down. We have tons of road projects going on around town and people are still whizzing around forty five, fifty, sixty miles an hour in a thirty five zone. Slow down. I'm getting passed on the freeway, like I'm standing still when I'm going seventy five, seventy eight. People need to slow down. We had a death this weekend on the freeway right up the road. Young man who isn't going home to his family. I have no idea why, none of my business, but you know, people need to slow down. And it's really bad this year in Colorado. We have the highest death rate for vehicular, pedestrian and motorcycle that we've had in, in years. So please, people, wherever you need to go, it doesn't matter if you're five minutes late. That's my soapbox and now I'm off it.
All right, and I one hundred and ten percent agree with that because it's, I see on my road that the, the speeding is horrendous and it's, it, you know, the, the police are out and trying to hit every part of town. But it's like one day, I, I know the police aren't there, I'm gonna go ahead and revert to the speeding. And, and on my two lane road, twice on Friday, I saw cars passing someone and you, you, you should only be getting to thirty five and while you're passing someone at sixty, it just doesn't make sense. So it's scary out there and you know, I've got a daughter who's now driving on her own. And, and as those of you who've gone through that as well, it's just not, it's not fun to watch that. So thanks, Sharon, for mentioning that. You know, and all the people that we've been thanking, I want to make sure that we do recognize the Beckett's who own that building and are, have been willing to have that discussion and, 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 you know, that, that building wasn't for sale. And when it was brought to their attention, they, they jumped on board and, and we worked with them as well. So Audrey Beckett in particular, who's been kind of the, the one working that, that there, just wanted to make sure she got recognition because you know, she could have even said, no, I'm not for sale right now. And, but you know, and obviously things had to work in, in everybody's favor. And I think everyone worked together on this one in, in the spirit of that. And so just again, I, the last couple of meetings, I've gotten on some soapboxes, but to use Sharon's term. But I just a, a word of encouragement tonight to everybody, if you're- But I just a a word of encouragement tonight to everybody, if you're listening or not. And and hopefully this gets out past what our meeting is tonight. But if I can encourage you to do anything, it's to stay away from social media. It has been, I think it's going to be the the downfall of our society as we know it. I I was on today, I usually just get on to see how my friends are doing, my family, because we get to, you know, that's one way we can kind of see each other through pictures and things. But just the attitude of people towards people is horrible. And, you know, everyone has an opinion and everyone's opinion is right. And and I could tell you that's flat out wrong, you know, and 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 it's, it's disheartening to see the way people are treating each other right now. And and it stinks to be just kind of blunt, the way we're treating each other these days, it's, it's, we're a bunch of tough guys, but you you're you're not willing to come out in front in front of your keyboard to to confront people face to face. And, you know, I think that's sad and and the world is is slowly going downhill, all because of social media, I'm going to put it all on that. And and it's, it's sad that we we've, we're using a tool to really beat each other up with. And and really you have no business of doing that. You know, we're losing sight of who we are as a, as a, as a country and as a community. And, you know, so my words of encouragement today would be to encourage you to stay away from it. Because it's, nothing's good, nothing's good on it. And, you know, I, you know, there are people who are trying hard to to be open minded, but it's just, you can't even do that anymore. And so as far as the city, we're going to put on permission, information that needs to be out there to inform people. We're not putting things out there to create controversy, we're not putting things out there to to give you a soapbox to then attack, because that's not what it's about. We're, we're, we're about bettering our community for the future. And so when you see information come from us at the city level, we're, we're giving you information that's going to hopefully benefit your lives and and give you information as to what you, what you need to be planning for in the future. So, you know, if you don't like what I have to say, then that's your your opinion as well and and please move forward with that. But I get to have the floor right now, so I'm going to go ahead and do it. But with that, we don't have any executive session tonight. So we will see you on September twenty-second, twenty twenty, as long as everything seemed to have gone well tonight, we'll do another virtual in-person meeting. So we'll see you then, our meeting is adjourned.
You're going to hear about that last part.